Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public hearing this evening. Just a note, we have two colleagues who are virtual this evening. We have Councilmember Sales and Glass who will join us virtually. This is a public hearing on the FY26 capital budget supplemental appropriations to the FY25 capital budget and amendments to the FY25 through 30 capital improvement programs for county government, Montgomery County Public Schools, Montgomery College, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, Washington Suburban Transit Commission, the Revenue Authority, Housing Opportunities Commission, Municipality and State Projects, and the FY26 through 31 CIP for WSSC Water. Committee work sessions on the FY26 capital budget supplemental appropriations to the FY25 capital budget and amendments to the FY25 through 30 capital improvement programs will be scheduled through the end of March. Each registered speaker has three minutes to speak. You'll hear a tone when your time is up, and we appreciate everyone abiding by their time limit. Our first panel of speakers, the first five include Mayor Talisha Circe, Mayor Tracy Furman, Michael Larkin, Nicholas Bassi, and Gloria Aparicio Blackwell. And Mayor Circe, we will start with you when you are ready.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Stewart and Montgomery County Council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. The city of Tacoma Park has a growing population of young families. Currently, approximately 8% of the city's population is under the age of five. This growth places considerable pressure on the city's primary and secondary schools. Piney Branch Elementary School is the smallest school site in Montgomery County with no room for temporary class space. MCPS acknowledged in previous CIPs that the school has current and projected overutilization and needs a comprehensive facility upgrade to address aging infrastructure. I'm here tonight to thank the county executive, the county council, and the Board of Education for ensuring that funds were made available in the FY2025 CIP to conduct a feasibility study for a major capital project for this school. This is the first important step to improve the learning experience for children in Tacoma Park. The city of Tacoma Park requests that the feasibility study be completed in a timely manner and the construction funds necessary for the project be added to future CIPs. However, while we wait for completion of the study, interim improvements such as HVAC upgrades are critical and should be added to the MCPS operating budget. Again, thank you for your collaboration with the city on this matter, and we look forward to realizing the community goal of improving Piney Branch Elementary School.
Mayor Furman?
Okay, thank you very much. I'm not as prepared as I wish I was. We've had two armed robberies in town of Kensington last week, and so it's been quite a busy time for us. I think for many of you, you remember the ULI TAP report show that we did last year to make sure that the Summit Avenue Extension stayed within the CIP. This is a very important project to the town and the county. This is an area within our town that has been identified as a place for affordable housing, as a place that, you know, workforce housing, and I have, I'm coming here as an extremely frustrated constituent of, and county resident. This road has been on the CIP for what seems like forever. It gets put in, it gets taken out, it gets put in, it gets taken out, and we're asking you to put it in at least one more time. And possibly if we need to delay it, we understand that, but this road is the economic redevelopment in this area. It's location, location, location. Town of Kensington is less than 10 minutes from NIH, the Walter Reed, the future White Flint Life Science Site, and you're in a town that likes affordable housing. We have a high-end senior facility that people spend thousands of dollars a month within a short distance of an apartment building, a high-rise apartment building that take vouchers. We can handle this, and we would like to see this area redeveloped, but we need the road. We are a town that has a $3 million budget. We cannot build this road on our own. We need help, and so that's why I'm coming to you to ask to please, please, please put the Summit Avenue Extension back into the CIP. I believe the county has more vision, or the county council has more vision than our current county executive and who just does not seem to understand what we're trying to do. We've checked all the boxes for, from Montgomery Housing Partners for this area. We met with them, and they like it, and, but we need, we need help. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Furman. Mr. Larkin?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Mike Larkin. I'm speaking on behalf of the Action Committee for Transit as one of their board members, and ACT strongly encourages the council to prioritize CIP projects that build more bus lanes, safer infrastructure for active transportation, and community development projects that accelerate the production and preservation of housing. These projects will bring us closer to our county's various plans that promise communities built near transit and sustainably developed. ACT is very encouraged by the possible extension of the US29 BRT to Howard County, and we look forward to that, but we must note that for the BRT project to be successful, and they have world-class transit networks on 355 and Veer Mills Road, we're going to need dedicated bus lanes and also learn the lesson of what's going on in US29. Right now, on US29, wait times and travel times are increasing due to multiple buses traveling in the same corridor but using different stops and different fare payment systems. I happen to ride this bus, and on many occasions, I've paid my separate flash fare, but the local bus comes first. It's happened on one too many occasions, and I know I'm not alone. So this is something we have to keep in mind as we can build out the BRT program. Now, ACT wants to state that if the budgetary constraints facing our county, which are very real, prevent us from building a true high-capacity BRT network, then we should consider spending our time and money on running more frequent buses on an expanded network. The Bus Priority Program Minor Projects has already proven to us that we can start building bus lanes now, such as on the University Corridor Boulevard. Furthermore, our great transit experience also includes pedestrians and bicyclists and people who are rolling along this, along these corridors. It should be safe to get to a bus. People have to get there in the first place. For example, on US29, that's another great place where people are gonna, getting off buses to many different destinations, including the new Montgomery College East County campus. We should be making this safe. Now, I want to conclude by saying that ACT realizes that all of these transit goals won't mean much if people don't have homes near them. The Action Committee sent a letter to the council on January 10th requesting action on housing production, and we are excited to support the new workforce housing ZTA that's coming up that wants to build transit along corridors. However, if we're gonna build transit along corridors, that means we must make the streets safe to walk and take the bus and to bike. Those need to be priorities if we're gonna put housing there. ACT looks forward to these deliberations on the workforce housing bill and what is gonna be needed to make those communities livable, transit-oriented communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bassi?
Good evening. I'm Nicholas Bassi, Paint Branch Cluster Coordinator for the Montgomery County Council of PTAs. As you might already know, we represent about 50,000 members across 192 local PTAs across the county. The Paint Branch Cluster is in East County District 5 and serves approximately 7,700 students across nine vibrant schools, Paint Branch High School and the eight elementary and middle schools feeding into it. We are proud of our fast-growing, diverse, and politically active part of the county and are grateful that the MCPS superintendent's budget recommendation includes reconstruction of one of our schools, Burtonsville Elementary School. Burtonsville was approved for an addition about 10 years ago. This project, despite having a completed feasibility study, a named architect, and consultations with the entire staff, failed to break ground. Their space crisis has only worsened over the past decade without any relief from this body. In the meantime, their cafeteria, for example, can only fit one grade level at a time, resulting in six lunch periods. They only have room for one lunch line, which by necessity extends into the hallway and disrupts nearby classrooms. The cafeteria is also their only gathering space, but because it hosts lunch from 10:40 in the morning until 2:10 in the afternoon, it's generally unavailable for the enrichment activities and assemblies that typically round out a holistic elementary experience. This lunch schedule also creates staffing issues because paraeducators and occasionally other staff must trade instruction time for lunch duty. Now, this is not the only challenge. I chose it for simplicity's sake. I could go into greater detail about plumbing, HVAC, and other issues, but I'm choosing this because it is a helpful illustration of some of the issues that are primed for action by this body in following through with the school's addition as outlined by and already approved in the superintendent's CIP request. I further urges this council, given the end of the Maryland Built to Learn Act and projected impact tax revenue declines, to create an infrastructure financing task force as was discussed in your fall hearings. Additional revenue sources will help to ensure that the issues plaguing Burtonsville and schools all across MCPS are addressed before they reach crisis levels. We thank you in advance for including Burtonsville Elementary in this year's CIP package. We invite you to join Councilmember Mink on one of her upcoming visits to Burtonsville so that you can see for yourself the positive impact that your CIP vote can have on our 600-plus students and the families they represent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Blackwell?
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Gloria Aparicio Blackwell. I am the Chair of the Montgomery College. It's nice to see all of you. We're grateful that we can count on the council to help the college deliver high-quality learning spaces to fulfill its important role in our county. As an alum, I truly know the value of your support. MC helped launch my future, and now I'm here before you. Thank you for this opportunity. With you, MC's more than 45,000 students can seize opportunity through credentials of economic value and become the homegrown workforce our county needs to build a more prosperous community. In fact, the $100 million-legged building represents your commitment to unlocking the potential of every student. We need your continued support as always, your commitment to facilities that open door to opportunity. The college FY25 capital budget is a fiscal prudent request. We need your help to maximize existing resources to advance key deferred maintenance project. Additionally, the Rockville Campus Library is out of date that needs and needs attention. Please continue to help move forward with the new Student Services Center at the Germantown Campus. And finally, we need to keep the Theater Arts renovation and the East County Campus so we can get the kids from, from your school moving forward. Fortunately, we know that we can count on you on behalf of Dr. Williams, the Board of Trustees, the students, and alumni like me and Natalie. Thank you. Muchas gracias. We need your support. We know that you have a lot of commitments to make and a lot of priorities, but this is the engine of Montgomery County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you to all our panelists for your comments. I will now call up our second group. We have Kathryn Stocker, Hillary Swab, Penina Victor, Clarice Bernades Kobel. Those are the next four speakers, and we'll start with Ms. Stocker when you have an opportunity to get yourself settled.
Dear President Stewart, Vice President Juwondo, and members of the county council, thank you for the opportunity to testify at this hearing. My name is Kathy Stocker, and I serve as the Cluster Coordinator for the BCC Cluster, for which it is my pleasure to represent the families of the over 7,000 kids currently enrolled over our 10 schools. I come before you this evening to encourage you to fully support the amendments to the MCPS CIP for FY25 to 30. We know that we are in a budgetary era of eating our vegetables and that there's no space on the menu for dessert. Looking at the proposed MCPS CIP budget, the fat has already been trimmed. We know that as a council, you face difficult choices and decisions. We strongly encourage you to pass a budget that funds the amendments to complete the long-awaited auditoriums at Woodward and Crown High Schools and the athletics stadium at the new Northwood. And while HVAC systems are not as delicious and fun as new auditoriums and stadiums, we have to start chipping away at the backlog of HVAC repairs and replacements in our system. Specifically concerning the BCC Cluster, I want to highlight the lumpiness and enrollment variability that exists in a system as big as ours. You may see smoother, flat lines in overall enrollment over the county, but those smooth lines obscure some of the big spikes that we, as a community, must work together to manage. For example, the current CIP projects an enrollment at Bethesda Elementary of 644. BE hit that number in November, and the student body at BE grows over the course of the year as military and international families stream in over the course of the year as, at a steady rate. BE, as an example, is out of classroom space with four classes at each grade level, many with almost 30 students per class. Core spaces are stretched to the limit, and there are more students coming. BE's PTA leadership recently completed an analysis of the school population, and over 67% of our students come from multifamily structures. We currently have four new high-rise apartments coming online, the Cecil on Old Georgetown, the Sophia on St. Elmo, 4909 Auburn Avenue, and Hampden House, for a total of 1,114 new units. Based on this analysis and those units coming online, we can expect up to an additional 100 students for BE alone at BE with no place, with no plan in place on how we handle this influx. As downtown Bethesda grows and develops, we need a plan for the schools. We must work together in a data-driven and transparent way to ensure that there's enough slack in the system to accommodate every student, the students who like to eat their vegetables and even the ones who not so much. Thank you for your service to the students and families of Montgomery County.
Thank you. Ms. Swab?
It's very fitting that I'm following the comments from the BCC Cluster and the Bethesda Elementary School. I am testifying in support of Dr. Taylor's amendments to the CIP, which include money for the completion of the Woodward High School and additional funding to address the HVAC issues in the schools. However, once again, the CIP fails to provide any additional money to address the overpopulation at Ashburn Elementary School, which is the largest elementary school in the county. We also, our brethren in farmland, I think is very close behind us. Next year, MCPS estimates that the population will be over 900. Current population is 878. We have a seat deficit of, depending on how you calculate it, 52, but the actual building capacity is at 770, and we are at 878. However, this is not a new issue for this community, and it is not a new issue, and should not be a new issue to you. The school has had temporary classes, classrooms occupying its property since 2012. When MCPS converted eight portables to a modular building, the plan stated, "With the eight classroom addition, the school's program capacity will be increased to 770 seats, which is the approximate upper limit of the preferred school capacity. The modular classroom will accommodate the additional students until a new elementary school can be constructed in the cluster." No new elementary school or solution has emerged, but what has emerged is constant unfettered development in the Ashburn Service School area. The permanent, the ongoing development has exacerbated situations and, coupled with the structural inequities, have desperately impacted the school and the students. As you can see from the chart that is attached to my written testimony, the school has a farms rate six times that of its neighboring schools that, by the way, have capacity. Class sizes on average across all grades have three more students than the neighbor, its neighboring peers, 50% more in special education students than its peers, and double the number of EML students. This has translated to diminishing educational outcomes for some of our most vulnerable students. The fifth-grade math and ELA test scores at Ashburn are 30 to 40% lower than those of its neighboring peers. Inadequate infrastructure funding, lack of transparency and coordination from MCPS and planning, and unwillingness to make hard decisions has led us to this place. As many, so many families face uncertainty, public schools should create a safe place in the counties and a place where the communities can gather, a place of opportunity. I urge the county council and MCPS to work with our community and other communities like Bethesda facing high development growth to develop long-term solutions to address overcrowding at all of our schools and ensure that funding is available in the next CIP to take the first step of keeping the promise made so long ago.
Thank you. Ms. Victor?
Good evening, members of the Montgomery County Council. It is an honor to speak with you. My name is Penina Victor. I am a proud Montgomery College student studying biological sciences. I plan to graduate and transfer to the University of Maryland. My goal is to work in biomedical research for the National Institutes of Health. I want to live, work, and give back to my community, Montgomery County. I'm here to thank you for your ongoing support of Montgomery College and to ask for your continued support to keep MC affordable for students like me. I also ask, I also ask for your much-needed support for the renovation of the Rockville Campus Library. I grew up in India where I lived with my father and grandmother while my mother moved to Silver Spring to work and help support the family. My father passed away when I was 15, leaving me and my sister with no one to take care of us. Our only hope was to move to the United States to live with our mother. Moving to the U.S. opened up many opportunities for me, like to pursue my dreams, which I could not in India. After graduating from Gettysburg High School, I worked two jobs to save up for my college, and I didn't want to burden my mother financially since she had just lost her job. I enrolled at MC where I excelled in my education while also being able to afford tuition. My mother and stepfather moved to North Carolina for work, and I had to make the hard decision to move, to stay in Silver Spring alone while supporting myself just so I could pursue my educational goals at MC. Today, I attend MC with pride while pushing through financial and mental struggles with the support of my faculty and administration. MC has opened my eyes to things that I have never turned off. I have also gained powerful skills while working two part-time jobs on campus. MC has blessed me with many resources, but the library is the most important one to me. I worked at the library for a few semesters and have witnessed how students have benefited from it, including myself. It has provided It has provided a safe space for students who cannot study at home, like single mothers or students who live in noisy environments. Also, I have taken advantage of the study group in the library, which has given me space to give presentations and study in an open space. With a modern library, students will thrive. Thank you for your investment in the future of students like me and for the support you have shown our college. Although these resources are helpful, the library needs to be renovated. We need up-to-date spaces like wide study areas, collaborative rooms, and computer access. MC has given me hope, opportunity, and a chance to pursue my dreams. Because of your support, Montgomery College can help countless students like me pursue their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Victor. Next we have Ms. Kobel.
Good evening. My name is Clarice Bernades Kobel. My family immigrated to the U.S., specifically to Montgomery County, when I was two. I've lived here my entire life. I graduated from WJ and my three children will graduate, hopefully, from there as well. I'm here to talk about Ashburn Elementary School. I have a second grader, a kindergartner, and my youngest will go there as well. Ashburn is the largest elementary school in the county with a whopping 878 students. It's overcrowded. We've known this for years. Nothing has been done to address it. We did get close once, though. In FY '19, a capacity study for elementary schools in our cluster was approved. The study projected that Ashburn would have 865 students and a 95-seat deficit in 2024. They're close. It's more than that. The report went on to recommend a new school, and after community meetings and surveys, a site was selected. However, a new school was not built. Ironically, a new development was built, and that is now zoned to Ashburn. It is not necessarily my recommendation that a new school is built. My point is that the county began addressing this in 2019 and never finished the job. A Bethesda Magazine article from 2016 described that some students at Ashburn sat on trashcans because there weren't enough chairs. Fast forward to this year, we've had students in a class rotate sitting on the floor because the classroom, which is in a temporary modular structure, cannot fit additional desks. This is in Bethesda, Maryland. I'm going to share you, I'm sharing with you the impact that overcrowding has had on my own kids as well. Last year, my son's second-grade teacher had to evacuate the class a number of times when responding to a child's behavioral needs. As the only adult in the room, she had no other choice. This happened again just a couple of weeks ago. If we weren't overcrowded, the other staff would have been available to help these teachers manage these crises. But unfortunately, Ashburn staff are stretched to their limits while running a school of 878 students with insufficient resources. And then there's my kindergartner. The overpopulation at Ashburn is hardest on the students that have the highest needs and my son has a speech delay. He has classmates with even more severe disabilities and the teacher is on her own managing this all since there are six kindergarten classes at Ashburn, sharing only one paraeducator. My son's speech progress has halted. He routinely tells me he is not understood. Imagine what he's experiencing every day as a five-year-old with a speech delay attempting to communicate and learn amidst the chaos that is inherent in a school of 878 students. What's my point? Children at Ashburn are suffering due to the county's failure to address a known problem. I understand that some believe overcrowded is not the appropriate word to describe Ashburn, but as Dr. Taylor shared at a recent listening session, what else are we supposed to call an elementary school with 878 students? I support his amendments to the CIP, but I ask that additional funds are added to address Ashburn's overpopulation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kobel. Thank you, everyone, for sharing this evening. That is it for this panel. And for our in-person speakers, we appreciate everyone who is here in person. We will now go to our first virtual speaker, who is Quentin Remine. Excuse me, Mr. Remine, you're on mute.
Hello, Council President Stewart and other council members. My name is Quentin Remine. I live at 205, 201 Bryant's Nursery Road. We are speaking on the Norwood Road Shared Use Path that is proposed to be built along Norwood Road from New Hampshire Avenue to just past Blake High School. Land along the 6,000-foot path was developed as homes mostly by residents of the Hollygrove Community that was started by freed slaves in 1844, for which many of the community still are descendants today. On the southern side of Norwood Road, many of the homes exist today along with Blake High School. The homes are close to the road so that many residents have placed trees and bushes along the road to shield them from busy road, busy traffic on Norwood Road. On the northern side, farms owned by members of the Hollygrove Community have been developed into homes on two-acre zoning. The homes are placed far from the road and since they were recently built, they have land dedicated for future improvements along Norwood Road. In May of 2021, the council discussed building and planning for sidewalks to support Blake High School, but the plans were never developed and the only thing that came out of the discussions were the cost of the sidewalk would be $500,000 to $750,000. The county has since developed a bike and road plans that would place the path on the north side of the road rather than the south side. On April 16 of 2024, Montgomery County DOT held an insert in-person public information meeting to discuss the project details of the Norwood Road Shared Use Path. This was a detailed plan of 99 pages that placed the path on the south side. During the meeting, the DOT could not identify why the plan was placed on the south side, but later submitted a rationalization that the team decided, based on technical factors, to place the road there. At the presentation, many residents spoke against placing the use path on the south side, and I'd, time doesn't permit, to go into all the things that were brought up. Many also felt the path was not needed at all. The community was alarmed that there was no attempt to engage the residents on anything regarding the plan or the details of the plan. The Cloverley community would have liked to have been part of the identifying the issues that were of interest to residents in the community. Norwood Road has become more congested with increased traffic from east and east only in Sandy Spring, creating the need to, for the road to be widened. There are also a large number of issues that the community has developed for why the road should be on the south side. And also, bus runs also from Blake High School to the road. Montgomery County has received many comments, but there's been no changes in the plan. The Cloverley Senate Commission has reviewed the plan several times and has voted unanimously to recommend to the county council that implementation of the Norwood Youth Path be delayed to give citizens input into the plan and to consider placing the youth path, the use path, on the northern side of Norwood Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Teresa DK.
Good evening, Council President Kate Stewart and esteemed council members. My name is Teresa DK. I'm a parent of a fourth grader at Ashburn Elementary. With close to 900 students, Ashburn is at overcapacity, with this number projected to increase due to the addition of population resulting from high-population properties such as Amelie and Astrid and the Ray Housing Development recently constructed within the school's catchment area. This overcapacity has been a longstanding problem, which poses a safety and security concern for the school and our students. I therefore urge the council and MCPS to work together with the community to craft a solution addressing overcapacity and unchecked enrollment growth at the school. According to a Montgomery County Planning Department document, the current modular classroom wing at Ashburn built in 2019 was solely intended to create an overall school capacity of 770 seats, which MCPD described as, quote, "the approximate upper limit of the preferred school capacity." This MCPD document described the modular classroom wing as only intended to, quote, "accommodate the additional students until a new elementary school can be constructed in the cluster," which would, quote, "not commit MCPS to an exceptionally large elementary school." MCPS Superintendent Taylor recognized in a letter to Bethesda Elementary School families in December 2024 that a modular classroom, quote, "is not optional, optimal for the long run because the temporary structures of modular classrooms are not designed for long-term use." He further, quote, notes, quote, "When modular classrooms are added, the size of common areas does not change, resulting in the school still feeling overcrowded with limited operations." And yet, the modular classroom wing at Ashburn remains in use seven years later with no plans articulated to address the overcapacity problem. The high number of students in Ashburn's classrooms and lunch recess areas poses an unsustainable danger. Should an emergency occur, the large population will make it difficult to safely and quickly evacuate them. Some students cannot finish their lunch because lunch periods at Ashburn stretch from 10:20 in the morning until 2:20 in the afternoon to accommodate one lunch period per grade because each grade is so large. Also, the large numbers result in inadequate monitoring of students, which also poses a danger to the students. In addition, the stress created for teachers results in teacher burnout and a high level of attrition. Objective data, including from the state of Maryland and MCPS, which I have cited in my written testimony, shows that Ashburn is significantly behind neighboring schools' academically on state-required tests and has a much higher utilization percentage than neighboring schools. Thus, the overcapacity at Ashburn also negatively impacts the academic growth of the school. This situation has become untenable. I thus again implore the council and MCPS to work together to address the overcapacity issue as an urgent and immediate priority, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. DK. Our public hearing is now closed. Thank you for everyone sharing their views, and we are now adjourned. Good evening, everyone.
Don't, don't just click on any link that comes to you.